I'll call this regular council meeting in the village of Graham and Anne to order at 7:35 PM. With us for prayer this evening is Pastor Dave Smith.
Good evening, everybody. Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for your many blessings. We thank you tonight for our beautiful island home of Graham and Anne. We thank you for the wonderful people of this island, and we thank you for council overseeing our home. We thank you for their service, and we pray for them tonight as they discuss issues around Graham and Anne. We pray your blessing upon their conversations, their planning, and their work. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I have a few opening remarks tonight. First of all, I want to lead off by thanking Councilor Layton, who resigned from council a couple of weeks ago. I just want to thank him for his work on behalf of the community, and I know I'll miss his input around the table, but I'm thrilled that he's continuing on as highway supervisor, and I think that feeling is shared around the table. A couple of other quick updates. From last month, we had a presentation about a food truck being based here in the parking lot. We understood there was a bit of a time crunch around approval for that, so we had a couple of special meetings to come up with a policy. And you guys know this as you're looking at me, but this is more for the people watching. There is policy approved for a maximum of five consecutive days a month. So many months, up to 12 if you want to be here, with one long weekend a year. If there's an open long weekend that hasn't been booked 30 days out, then that is open for booking as well. So that will apply to all food trucks, and we're waiting for confirmation on what the insurance requirements are just as a final step for that policy. So hopefully that will allow us to continue to have food trucks here in the parking lot, and we'll sort of balance some of the requests and input that we had from a number of players. Another couple of quick updates. Just a reminder from the fire department that 911 numbers should be displayed prominently on people's property. It's been a while since we've done one of those reminders, and I think that some of them are maybe disappearing. So if you haven't got a blue 911 number, it might be a good time to reach out to the office here and pick one up. I've been having semi-annual calls with NV Power over the last year or so about the Ingalls Head Generating Station because that was identified in the province's energy strategy a couple of years ago as being set for decommissioning. NV Power has recognized since then how important that is for us from a public safety perspective. So we had our call a couple of weeks ago. They have some maintenance money in the budget, I think, for next year or the year after, but we're going to continue to have conversations about it, but just so it doesn't fall off our radar and anybody else's, those conversations are ongoing. I also reached out to the Minister of Energy with the NV Power review that was announced, just so that we are included in that, given the importance of that generating station to the island. So that's on the radar. The last couple of things, council met with the Bank of Canada earlier in the month, which was a bit of a random request that we got, but they look at how the public has access to money. And having heard about our bank closing, they were interested to see how that has impacted the community. Normally, after one of those meetings, you kind of get a thank you. It was great for a visit. I have heard from them at least twice, if not three times, since the meeting. We, Graham and Anne, made an impression on them. I don't think that means we're going to get a bank back by any stretch of the imagination, but I think it does give us an opportunity to maybe play into some of the policy around how they view access to money in rural communities. And I know that they've reached out to a Met to participate in a survey as well since then, so that's ongoing. And then finally, just because it's been a topic of conversation, the ferry is really busy. We continue to meet with the province and press the need for expanded supplemental season coverage. The Five is in Shelburne right now, and will be back mid to late June to resume the run. It is unlikely there will be any additional weeks this year, but we are continuing to ask as well as press for a replacement ferry for the Five, given its age. So just because there has been nothing tangible doesn't mean that the conversations are not still ongoing. So that was a bit of a long opening remarks, which I apologize for, but I feel like we did a lot over the last few weeks, so it was worth doing a quick update. So with that, moving on to item number four, which is disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing none, we'll move on to adoption of the minutes. We have the regular council meeting of April 7th, the special meeting on April 11th, and another special meeting on April the 25th, and those were circulated in the packages.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to adopt the minutes as in the special meetings and the regular council meeting.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Councilor Valentine. Question. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Additions to the agenda. I've got a couple of modifications. We'd like to add the Comedians Against Humanity podcast to the presentations or delegations of special speakers.
Yeah, sorry, I turned my ears off.
Yes, this that you just got. So I'd like to add that to special speakers. Rory Chamberlain is here just to address any questions when we go over the letter. We'd like to move nine to the Business Center, the request for proposals, into closed session just so we can review the proposal a little bit more openly. Was that it? Oh, and also for closed session, we have the subdivision plan that we talked about last month up at the hole in the wall. There's an update on that, and I'd like to put that in under property if we could. So that would be nineteen-three. Nineteen-two would become the Business Center. You heard the motion from Councilor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilor Toll. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Okay, so moving on to old business, nine-one rural plan update. So at this point, I think we've had the rural plan for a little bit. I might open it up to Xander to see if he has anything to say about it because I haven't really, I don't have a lot of comments. I know that there's been some conversations back and forth with him, so maybe he can give us a little update on where we are, and then we can move on from there, if that's okay. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Thank you, Your worship. I don't really have anything to say. There's been some back and forth with some counselors, I think, really just answering questions. Didn't seem like there was any need to make any changes, at least not that I was aware of. So I spoke with the CAO earlier today, and I think we put together some motions for first and second reading. Not quite sure what happened with views of PAC. It sounded like those were maybe requested. I'm not sure what happened there. And calling for the public hearing, that would be another motion you could go with tonight.
Sounds good. So are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Oh, Councilor Green, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, a bunch of us, three of us met here, and we talked over some of my concerns. I had two pages of questions, and we talked over one page. I sent the second page as an email, and I got responses to them, but I accept the response, but I don't know if that's going to be, should be our final answer. I mean, I understand his rationale for wording the way things are worded, but I'm not sure if that's what we really want, and I don't know how we address that or when we address that. It can be done anytime up to the third reading, but, yeah.
If there are any substantial changes that are going to be made, they need to be done before the public hearing or before the public hearing is set or the public hearing has to happen again. So it depends. I'm not sure what the changes would be. If it's just minor language changes, then those could be made at any time. But if there's significant changes, then that kind of restarts the process.
I find it hard. You're over my shoulder when I'm trying to talk, and I find that hard to do. One of them, just didn't bring my glasses tonight. It wasn't that stupid. There's one about every structure has to be built where it has access to power and roads and all that. I can't, I can't read. My penmanship's bad, and I don't have my glasses. Where is that? And I was wondering if that meant that there are no more camps, cottages built off-road or, you know, back in hunting territory or Miller's Pond or Middle Dam and all that type of thing.
That provision would be for new lots only, not necessarily for a new building. But to create new lots, they have to front on a road of some kind and have access of some kind. And that's a provincial regulation that's been there for some time, so that's not really a new thing.
Yeah, that was four-point-two is where it was, one. What was the other one? And there's one about how far, how long your driveway can be, too. I just, I question whether that is really where we want to be as well.
So typically driveways can be as long as necessary, but private roads or things that are accessing multiple properties, that's where there tends to be restrictions, and that's generally for public safety, for things like firefighter access.
Yeah, I understand the rationale for it, but if someone must have a hundred-acre property and they want to build where they have a good view or access to the water, it sounds like we're being prohibitive in that from my reading of this document, and I'm not so sure.
Which section would that be from?
Yeah, I knew you were going to ask that.
Sorry.
I should have been more prepared for this, sorry. I apologize.
And also those kinds of things, I know there's also some discussions around a subdivision bylaw right now. Some of those things might be from the length of roads and length of things like that. That usually comes from the subdivision bylaw.
Right. And I know I'm jumping around here, but I just found one I can read. The tiny homes, we had talked about clustering tiny homes to allow, you know, more spaces to be built, basically. But the way this reads, you still need an acre for each tiny home. So if you have a four-acre lot, you could build four tiny homes on it, locate it basically on one acre and have a common well and septic, but the other three acres can never be developed. Is that, is that right?
That's a provincial public safety regulation.
Well, it certainly-
There may be opportunities for variances in certain cases, but that's, the province wouldn't approve the plan if, and again, it's in your current plan right now.
Yes, well, the reason we're looking at that is because the current plan, because we didn't think it was quite meeting muster. And I don't think we, I know I didn't read it as close as I should have the first or second time we went through it, but now I'm trying to understand and be able to rationalize some of these things we're trying to do, and if that's where we really want to be. And I'm probably in a minority here. I'm used to that, but if it concerns me, I want to talk about it. I'll let it go at that. I'm, I apologize for not being more prepared.
Councilor Toll, you had a comment?
Yes, I was wondering if maybe, Phil, maybe we could get three or four of us together and talk about that again, and maybe have a meeting with Xander, too, just to talk about our concerns so that we can take it over an hour or so instead of, and then we can come back, and we can still get that done before we have to have this public talk about it, maybe. But I think we need to discuss it a little bit more. We did talk quite a bit about it, but then we answered, I answered, asked Xander several questions. We got the responses. I sent them out, and we never really seemed to get back to, yeah.
I got his response to the-
Yeah, because I forwarded them to you, yeah.
But the ones we had discussed, I didn't see any response.
So maybe we should try to get together in the next week or something and talk about it more, and maybe meet with Xander as well and see if we can-
Yeah, I'm happy to zoom into a meeting. That's probably the easiest way. I wasn't sure. I thought that was going to happen before, but it didn't seem to, so just send me an invite.
So hopefully that won't stop us or slow us down here, but we can try and do something like that.
Okay, so as a takeaway, we will try to set up a meeting with Xander in the next couple of weeks. I will talk to the CAO about setting that up. In the meantime, I'm wondering if it's worth, and I don't know what the protocol is here, Xander, so you can feel free to shoot this down, but we are supposed to have a motion to request the views of PAC. Is it worth having, doing that now in advance of the public meeting? Before we have our meeting or in conjunction there with, or is it, what's your, yeah, I'm looking for a little guidance.
It, the, it's hard to say because if we have a meeting and no changes, you know, I'm able to answer all the questions. We realize these are, you know, provincial things that the municipality doesn't have the flexibility to control. We don't make any significant changes. We could ask for views and everything and go to public hearing tonight and give readings. If we have that meeting and things change, then we have to go back through those steps again, which it doesn't really put you any further behind. It just means you might have to redo one of them. So I think you're good to ask for views and everything like that. And I, my understanding is there's some crossover between, I think it's the bylaw committee and PAC and membership. So maybe there would be some kind of indication of what PAC's views would be there through that conversation. I think, I think it is good to keep the process moving as much as possible.
That, that's kind of my concern because I know we've had this on the agenda a couple of times, and I, we don't seem to be able to get past the putting it on the agenda part of this, so. But we aren't under a timeline crunch, like this isn't a you need to have this done by X date, are we?
No, I mean, there's one property in particular that was zoned industrial in the current rural plan. Ferry Point, not Ferry Point, it's right near the ferry. It's the office building. And there's been some interest in, I think they've been trying to sell it, and they're having problems because of the zoning. And I've sort of been telling them to hold off on applying for rezoning because it's the same process, and we can take care of it in this. So that's the, if it seems like we're going to really, you know, like it's going to be months longer, then I might tell them, go ahead and apply for that rezoning, but that shouldn't hold up. That shouldn't force you to do this any faster.
No, and I'd rather do it and do it correctly than rush the process. So let's, so I guess at this point, I'm asking, what is the will of the group? Do we want to have a meeting with Xander someday at lunchtime over the next couple of weeks? And then we can put this back on the agenda in June, and hopefully then go forward with the PAC views, schedule the public meeting and all of those things. Is that good? Makes sense. Okay. Very good, Xander.
Madam Mayor, the only thing I would ask, and I kind of get the sense of this here this evening, the Councilor Green's, it'd be nice to know what is, really, we don't have any say in, you know, like provincial regulation versus what we really can have some say in, I guess.
The question, if you have any.
Yeah, and, you know, I agree with you on that reaction.
All right, Xander, how about tomorrow morning, we'll send you a couple of dates. We'll see if we can narrow up, and then we'll go from there. Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, thank you. You don't have to link, hang-
You're welcome.
You don't have to hang out for the rest of the meeting.
No, I won't. And have a good rest of your meeting, though, and I'll look forward to that email.
Okay, sounds good. Do we want to send it to PAC to review? It has to go to PAC. Do we want to send, do that motion now?
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we send the proposed rural plan to the PAC to review.
You heard the motion from Councilor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Councilor Turner. Question.
I would just add that we need to have those reviews back before the next regular meeting.
We can, why don't we set up our meeting with Xander? And then if we do that ahead of the PAC, we can talk about next steps at that point. Is that fair? Because the PAC meeting would be open anyway if somebody wanted to come. Is that fair? Any other question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. So then that moves us down to nine-three, which is the Canada Community Building Fund. CAO Rayner to discuss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've talked about this a few times. Staff has come up with a short list of some projects that we think would be priority for the village. Councilor Green asked for some numbers on these projects. We have numbers for just about everything other than a possible fire hall expansion. As everyone know, we have a new fire truck coming within the next six to eight months, and there's not enough room in the fire hall to put it in there. But I'm just, at this point, we're starting to put the CCBF five-year priority list together. And in order to get that price, we would have to spend a little bit of money to get some type of an architect or engineer to at least come in and tell us what we're going to need. I had a short conversation with our commercial building inspector, and unfortunately, the fire hall expansion is going to have to be built to post disaster, just like the hangar. So in with that, we're going to need an engineer and architect to tell us exactly what we need to meet those specifications. So with everyone's permission, I would like to reach out and get some prices to see what it would be to add the addition onto the fire hall. Yeah, if I'm going to spend a little bit of money, we'll have to have a motion.
I'd make a motion to let the CAO do the consult, architect or engineer into what we need for the fire, addition to the fire hall.
You heard the motion from Councilor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Ten-minute open session. I think everybody's here for item number eleven, which lets us talk back to them. So why don't we move right along up to the Neighborhood Works presentation? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Greg Campbell. I'm a street outreach worker for Charlotte County with Neighborhood Works. And Katrina Towns is our youth outreach worker for Charlotte County. She's just going to be handing out a few aids to go with the presentation, as well as our business cards. If you guys need to contact us, please feel free to. Some of you may be, and I've met a few of you briefly before, but some of you may be familiar with Neighborhood Works. And if you're not, I'll give you a little rundown here. They've actually been helping, they started helping youth with special needs back in 1975. You may better know them as the Charlotte County Group Home, which they rebranded as Charlotte County Group Home in 1985 with three boys and a donated house. And they were the first group home, group care facility in Charlotte County, serving from Sussex, McAdam, and the Three Islands for co-ed for boys and girls. And this is from the ages of thirteen to eighteen. And served many all over Charlotte County, over eight, providing over eight hundred solutions, or solutions for more than eight hundred youth. And the services have been available, and I believe utilized by some youth from the island as well. Confidentiality, we don't get into details of that, but first group care facility. Then in 2019, they opened the first sibling-focused group home with house parents so that they could have, you know, a real family feel. It was the first of its kind in New Brunswick to not separate siblings so that siblings could grow up even together, and that's still in existence now. In 2021, we rebranded as Neighborhood Works. So that's where, went from Charlotte County Group Home to Neighborhood Works in 2021. And we opened a second sibling-focused care facility up in Grand Bay Westfield. In the fall of 2021, they acquired the Old Catholic Church on 59 Union Street in St. Stephen, which now operates, acts as our head office. And the plan with getting that property was they want to, and Jim Stewart wanted to be here with us. He's the executive director. He has a lovely little video on it. But we're transforming it into transitional housing for youth so that youth aged sixteen to twenty-four, they can, if they're having troubles at home or, you know, and they want to try it on their own, they can. They'll be able to, you know, pay rent at a reduced rate, but buy their own groceries and kind of have a lot of supports there to help them see what it's like to live on their own. So transitional housing for youth, and that is available to all youth across Charlotte County. There's going to be seven units, and that should be finished and ready for launch this summer. We've been working on it for quite some time. Fire codes and stuff, you guys get that, so it takes some time. But also with the remainder of that building, the Old Catholic Church, they want to turn that into a multi-generational service hub for youth and adults for multiple services, whether it's social development or dealing with mental health, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So in July of 2022, they, we launched community dinners. And community dinners, every Tuesday and Thursday night, you guys are in town, St. Stephen, stop on in. You can have a hot meal. Everybody is welcome. And actually, they've served over seventy thousand meals since the inception of that, back in July of 2022. When this started, when we started doing community meals, we noticed the needs of the unsheltered community. So there was a notice of some homelessness and others that were dealing with other issues. You may have got from what I've already said that there's a focus on youth, on caring for youth, right? With the multiple care facilities for youth, and then this transitional youth housing program coming in. What we noticed, a very important statistic is thirty-nine percent of homeless people are actually kids in care, once upon a time were kids in care. So we want, we noticed that there needed to be some continuing care, and that's where we started an outreach program for adults. And the first outreach worker came about at the end of 2022. We also launched an out-of-the-cold program servicing those that were homeless or unsheltered, that provides them somewhere to stay during the cold months. As this continued, the out-of-the-cold program, we noticed there was also youth involved. And we, the youth launch is, there's a flyer on that as well, but youth launch is a service. It's also available all over Charlotte County. We can, people can access it remotely. The worker can also come out here as well. And we could even launch a youth launch here on Graham and Anne, if there's enough demand for it. But for ages fifteen to twenty-nine, it's for people that are not in education, employment, or training. And we've actually noticed that nineteen percent of that age demographic are currently not in education and training or in employment. So it's a skills development program to help them see what is it you're interested in, help them, you know, get on the right path, right? And then in 2023, just a couple of years back, we launched youth outreach and outreach for Charlotte County, which is where my job has come in and Katrina's. And we're both Charlotte County-wide. The first outreach worker was just in St. Stephen, and they've noticed the need, as I'm sure you're aware. We could see the cost of rent is increasing, the cost of homes are increasing, and the homelessness and unsheltered community is increasing, so there's a need there. And then in December of 2024, we just recently opened the Lighthouse Lodge, which started as an out-of-the-cold program and is transitioning into a 24-hour shelter, which also we want to have a service hub there for connecting those with needs to resources and help them to do a lot of other things in regards with that. So currently, we have the three houses for youth care, the group- So currently, we have the three houses for youth care, the group home, sibling house, and that for complex trauma and needs. Now, me, myself, I'm a street outreach worker, so I try to help homeless adults or those that are unsheltered, or precariously housed. Maybe their housing is getting pretty, you know, it needs some help, it needs some work. And I try to help people connect with the resources to maintain their housing, or if they don't have housing, to acquire it. And sometimes it's, it's just, some people don't have ID, right? We need to get them identification. Maybe there's mental health concerns. And it's just, you know, maybe income assistance is needed. There's a lot of resources out there, and a lot of people don't know how to access them. They need help navigating that system. So that's what I do, is I try to help people, meet them where they're at. Maybe there's addictions and mental health issues, maybe they need treatment, or maybe things are manageable. There's a lot of maybes, a lot of, a lot of different scenarios here. But I've been, having quite a lot of success in, in helping people get some life skills acquired, overcome some obstacles, get housing and maintain it. When I was first given this opportunity and came on board over a year ago, I was wondering, you know, well, how much am I going to do here, there, and everywhere, all over Charlotte County? And one of my first clients was from Grand Manan. I can't share details, but, you know, it was, it's awesome that I was able to help reconcile some relationships and allow that party to, you know, get back into, to housing, right? So there are successes here. I'm working with other individuals now. So partnering with other organizations on the island, like Action Ministries, and lots of good things. But we, our services are available. So one of the biggest things is sometimes seeing the need or letting people know that there is help available. So sometimes someone may come to you, and they may be couch surfing, or they may be staying in their car. Or maybe they're straight up homeless, and they've let that be known, and they need help. And you can let them know help is available, and we can come and meet them where they're at and try to overcome whatever obstacles and tackle that. So that's in a nutshell what I do as, as an outreach worker. And Katrina is focusing on the youth, so she's, I let her share a bit about that herself.
Sure. So basically, the, the youth outreach is very, very much everything that Greg just mentioned. I'm just working with individuals in a younger age demographic. So our youth outreach, we're focused on individuals who are ages 16 to 24. And the really important thing that I'm hoping from this community is we don't always necessarily think of homelessness, you know, it's, it's somebody sleeping on a bench or, or in a park. Not necessarily the, the target that I'm looking to get to. So with the youth outreach, a lot of it is focused on diverting away from homelessness. So I get a lot of youth on, on my, my list who could become homeless but aren't yet. So the, where our supports differ is that I, I try to intervene, and wherever possible, or wherever it makes sense and is safe for the young person, we try to come up with a way to prevent that homelessness from existing in the first place. And just to kind of build on something else, Greg mentioned navigating those systems. Many of us as adults find government systems pretty daunting. I've been working in government systems, and I've even worked here in this community on, with youth advocacy and supports for many years, and there's still days where I look at a new change to government policy, and it just, it's so big. And if you're already dealing with the stress of worrying if your housing is precarious, or maybe your home life isn't the most stable, you may be dealing with issues with addiction, mental health struggles. All of that makes it pretty darn hard to navigate a system that even adults find already daunting and overwhelming. So that's where I can really step in with, with youth and help connect them to those services. And the best way to do that is by making the community aware that we exist as a service. This community has traditionally been so tight-knit and supportive of its members that if you happen to know of a youth who, even if they aren't in trouble yet, could be going that way, that's probably somebody that I would like to meet and have a conversation. So we passed out the cards there. So those are the highlights on our programs. I've also given each of you Greg's and my business card. Call us anytime. If you see someone or you hear about someone, the best thing to do would be to share that contact information with them and encourage them to, to get in touch with us. And hopefully, we'll be able to come over here to the island a little bit more and start meeting some of the need. That's that.
Thank you, guys, very much. Do we have questions or comments around the table? Saw your hand go up there. I thought you were really excited on the middle.
We like to excited. Be excited. That's okay.
Go, go ahead.
No, just, how can we help? Like, what can we do? How can we get this word in?
Honestly, you, you guys know your community, everyone. We all know a family in our, in our church or at school. Especially when it's a, a smaller community like here on the island, everyone knows everyone else. And sometimes people are too afraid to come forward or to access government, what they call government systems or supports. We're, we're not that. We're not in the business of stepping in and pulling youth out of their families or, or anything like that. We're here to help, and we're here to connect youth and adults to resources that they might not know or have, have a background to even realize they exist. So you guys know your community. The best thing you could do is to make everyone aware that we exist and where we can come here and, and start providing that service.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times, we start a relationship with whoever the individual is that we're, we're helping, right? It's not just like, here, let's get you through this government system, or here, let's get you connected with this resource. It's like, hey, what's going on, you know? Let's go have coffee. Let's figure it out. You know, how's life treating you? And what's, 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 what are the habits and hangups that maybe we can overcome? You know, let's see the initial obstacles. And we usually, we do a lot of continuing care as well, where after, even after I house, get someone housed, I will always follow up with them, right? Usually weekly to start, and then after. We, we also try to make agreements with, well, I guess it's a participation agreement, kind of with someone, and be there in the middle for the landlord, because a lot of landlords can be a little bit, you know, skeptical about, hey, I don't know about renting to this person. And we will come in as an advocate and say, if and when there's issues, we'll try to, we will help address them. We also try to, of course, get the life skills in, in place. It's a lot of work, right? But yeah, the best thing is best, just spreading the word and really having someone reach out if, you know, letting them know there is help. Hey, why don't you give them a call? And that's what, that's what happened, you know, when I started here, I had to, someone connect a, a young person with me, and they, they called me on their concern. I said, they have to ask for, for the help themselves, right? And they, and they did. And then we were able to make some things happen, so.
So just out of curiosity, how big are you organization? How many people do you have helping you?
For, in, in the outreach aspect, for Charlotte County, we are the two that are all over Charlotte County, but there's a lot of other internal people within, you know, the group homes have multiple staff. The shelter has multiple staff. And then, of course, there's a lot of administrative and human resources staff there. But we are the boots on the ground for Grand Manan.
I do have a, my colleague, Jody, is, yeah, sorry, Greg mentioned youth launch. And I just, I always feel bad that I, I do these talks, and we drop the youth launch piece so often. Once a youth is past that stage where we've got the immediate needs dressed, and we can start having that conversation about employment, maybe even going on to post-secondary or getting them back into school, getting a GED. We, we, my colleague, we're, we're kind of two sides of, of, of one team. She can step in at that point, once we get immediate safety needs and, and housing addressed. Then we have that follow-up that Greg mentioned. We don't just, oh, cool, here's, here's a 1-800 number to call. It's really important that as you're sharing with the community what we can do, that, that you really emphasize, we don't just show up and give you some information and then ride off into the sunset. There is, there is a lot of follow-up that's done. And even if someone isn't successful, and we might see them two or three times, because humans fail, there's a dignity and a learning process and failure, and we're there to support through that. So I think that's really important to, to share, is you might make a bad turn somewhere. We're still going to be there to help.
Anyone else?
Thank you, guys, for coming. I have to say, I knew nothing about this program until the first time you came in and talked. And you don't know what you don't know. So I think if nothing else, at least to have this information and maybe get it out there. Because it's always amazing, the, when, when you learn something like this, how soon afterwards you discover a need for it. So I appreciate, guys, coming over tonight, so thank you.
And if there's any questions that pop up hereafter, send us an email, give us a call. Definitely, there's no such thing as a stupid question. We'd love to assist you anywhere we can.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, Eastern Charlotte Chamber of Commerce isn't here tonight, so I'm going to move on to Comedians Against Humanity. Rory, you're up. Do you want, do you want me to read the letter? Do you want to read the letter? It's probably better coming from you, but...
Okay, I'll give it a shot. All right, well, first off, thanks for having me. And, "Dear Mayor Morris and members of the Grand Manan Village Council, On behalf of the podcast Comedians Against Humanity, I'm writing to respectfully request a letter of recommendation or support from the village council. This letter is not necessarily needed, but would be very much appreciated as a part of our application to the Department of Public Safety Gaming Liquor and Security Licensing branch for a special occasion permit to serve liquor at a charitable fundraising event we are organizing. The event, tentatively scheduled for May 31st, 2025, at 7:30 PM at 56 Route 776, the site of the former Wellhouse Cafe, is being held in support of the Grand Manan Fire Department. We are committing to, we commit to donating the proceeds of alcohol sales at the event to the, support the vital services that the Grand Manan Fire Department provides our community, potentially helping with generating, potentially helping with general operational support and the purchasing of new equipment. Additionally, we have organized barbecue to be on-site with the Grand Manan Fire Department. They're going to volunteer, a couple of men demand that. And the proceeds from its sales will also be donated to the Grand Manan Fire Department. As organizers representing Comedians Against Humanity Podcast, we are committed to hosting a safe, responsible, and successful event that reflects positively on the community and maximizes support for our dedicated volunteer firefighters. We believe that having the endorsement of the village council will significantly strengthen our application for the necessary liquor, liquor permit and demonstrate broad community support for this important cause. We understand the responsibilities that come with a special occasion permit and assure council that all regulations regarding the serving of alcohol will be strictly adhered to. Would the council be willing to provide a letter addressed to the Department of Public Safety Gaming Liquor and Security Licensing Branch indicating its support for our application for a special occasion permit for this charitable event? We would be grateful for your consideration and are happy to provide any further information or answer any questions you may have. Respectfully yours on behalf of the Comedians Against Humanity Podcast, Rory Chamberlain."
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from around the table? Council Sturgeon?
I am curious about the title, Comedians Against Humanity.
The title is, it's the game show that we're going to produce for, on our YouTube channel is a, is a take on the card game, Cards Against Humanity. So if you're not familiar with it, it's a game of prompts, like, almost like a Mad Libs, where you are given, you, one person reads out a black card, and there's a fill-in-the-blank phrase. So our audience will submit their white cards, and then the comedians will read them. And whatever card gets the best response, that comedian will win the round, and so will the table. So I've got, and I've got 10 businesses to donate prizes for it, so I'll have prizes for each round for the audience members, and the comedians will get to come back. Since I'm also producing this as a podcast, I've, in exchange for those prizes, I've written ads that I'm going to edit into the podcast. So it will hopefully generate some revenue and some tourism for the business, for the island.
So Rory was in a few times last week. We had some discussions with staff. And basically, this is being held at the Old Wellhouse Cafe, which previously had liquor license. There's no bylaws with, with any concern other than the noise one, which, which, as he's addressed, is no concern. But this is nothing new to council. We've written the letters of support in the past, and he was just requesting for us to do it again.
Anyone else? Would you like to make a motion, or what is the wishes of the group around the table?
I will make a motion to do a letter of support. So that they can get their liquor licenses.
You heard the motion from Council Tole. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Council Valentine. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming. All right. We're moving up to 13, which is correspondence. There was a letter to council that I'm supposed to read. I just need to find. Thank you. Okay. "Dear Mayor and Council, I am writing to you concerning the businesses that have been setting up to sell food on village property. If a person were to prepare a piece of land, acquire the permits and power to partner with someone or business to set up a food truck, that's fine, that's business. It's another matter for the village to allow a food truck or any other business to set up shop on village property, use our power, the prime location, parking, and the business or person setting up just by being there is being promoted by the village. All local eateries on Grand Manan pay taxes for services, as well we should. We expect a level playing field and support from the council. If a business was allowed to set up shop right now in front of Town Hall to sell flowers and shrubs and various gardening supplies, it would be a big hit to a local business. In October, if the village allowed someone to set up and sell winter tires in front of the Town Hall, it would negatively impact our local businesses. I guess I would only ask why the municipal government is allowing this policy to go on and how it helps the local economy." Glenn Foster. So hopefully, by limiting the number of days that we're permitting it, it will address some of those concerns. And I think those concerns were some of the things we were trying to balance in coming up with the policy. So it's, I know there's some strong feelings on both sides, and hopefully, we've kind of found a way down the middle. Regional Service Commission update is the next thing, also for me. I try to do this every so often, just because I think it's good that we continue to talk about what's happening there. And I mentioned this, I think, to everybody at one of the special meetings, that we had the RSC annual meeting a week and a half ago at this point. And we had presentations from all the staff members on the various programs that the RSC is operating. It ended up being a three-hour meeting, which is significantly longer than what our meetings normally are. The videos are up on the website. But if you're interested in any pieces of that, whether it's the tourism, the economic development, the planning, or the operation of the landfill, I think I've missed something off the top of my head. Did I say community development? And they're all, they all gave the presentation. It was all really interesting to see, A, what work is being done, and then B, how that is impacting communities around this region. And it's, sometimes you lose sight of the, the more local issues there. So anyway, I just want to give a plug for some of the work that's being done there. Yeah, I think I'll leave it at that for now. So any questions or comments on that? 14-2, "Application for Donation Is GMCS Spring League Basketball." And that was all in the council packages as well. They are looking for $800 to, and they purchase medals for all participants and give prize bags for all of the award winners. This program is totally free for kids and allows over 120 students to participate in spring league this year. And they place donation jug, jugs outside the gym, and they're looking for other donations from other businesses, so. I know they're doing this for like a variety of age groups, and I think in the past, we donated our $200 maximum for each of the age groups. Was that baseball? Okay. So...
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion. Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we give the maximum donation that's prescribed to give.
You heard the motion from Council Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Council Tole. Question? I was going to say, I think we need to clarify what the dollar amount is in the motion.
It's, it's $200, isn't it?
$200, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Question?
So you're proposing that we give $200?
That's what it is, yes. Although, Madam Mayor, I believe we have discussed that. It's been quite a while since we've introduced that, so probably we'll have to look into bumping that. bumping that up in the very near future.
Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. All right. Moving on to item number seventeen, which is approval to pay the following invoices. From the General Operating Fund, we have Applied Communications for the Push to Talk radios, that's for the Public Works Department, four thousand seven hundred and thirty-two twenty-five. Dutchman Contracting for the Dark Harbor Wharf Repair, eight thousand four hundred and seventy-five fifty. Fitworks St. John for the Fitness Center, eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety cents. McGinnis Cooper for PAC for three thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and one cent. Sullivan Sales and Service for GM zero zero three, two thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars and five cents. Sullivan Sales and Service for GM zero zero three for six thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. Sullivan Sales and Service for GM zero zero two for one thousand eight hundred dollars and sixty-eight cents. And Sullivan Sales and Service for the Rec Truck for two thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-five cents.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to pay these invoices of the General Operating Fund.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Valentine. Question?
Madam Mayor, what's, what is GM zero three and GM zero two? We had in number each one of our assets, or Public Works. So GM zero one, two, where the big yellow seventy-six hundreds, GM zero three is the F five fifty, and the rec truck is the three-quarter ton. Okay, thank you. Never seen that before, so I was curious.
Any other questions?
Is that just routine maintenance, or we got something rear and out of the head somewhere?
No, the, the smaller amounts, the GM zero zero three for the twenty-three, GM zero zero two for eighteen hundred, and the rec truck for the twenty-six, that is replacing of shoes and plow steel and stuff at the end of the season, which, just from a long season of plowing. The sixty-four hundred for GM zero zero three, that was, one of the rear tires came loose and completely, basically destroyed the rim, the drive, everything on that, on that back wheel, so they had to completely redo that. And just as an FYI, the Fitworks bill for eleven thousand, staff has already been told not to pay that invoice. And we can approve it tonight, but we're not going to pay it until, we've had some issues with a brand-new piece of equipment. We bought a Stairmaster that's in there, and we've been struggling for weeks to get it repaired. So they will not be paid until it gets fixed.
Any other questions?
Sorry, me again. The Dark Harbor Wharf Repair, the treasurer reached out to Cooks, as well as the Fundy Folly with the Salmon Recovery Program, and they are going to pay two-thirds of that bill.
And two-thirds of the outlet.
And two-thirds of the outlet cleaning.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Seventeen-two from the General Capital Fund for Lindsay Construction, Progress Claim Number Seven, for sixty-one thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-two cents.
Lindsay Construction, sixty-one thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-two cents, according to the purpose, claim number two.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question?
The hangar, there are engineers for the hangar.
And they also are paying subcontractors as well, as part of that? Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Eighteen-one is a motion to transfer fifty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-five cents from the airport line of credit to the General Capital Fund.
I'm looking to transfer that amount for that reason.
You heard the motion from Counselor Valentine. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Next up is closed session. We have three items. Nineteen-one is financial for the cemetery mowing tenders. Nineteen-two is also financial or property for the Business Center Request for Proposals, and nineteen-three is property for the hole-in-the-wall property.
Let's make a motion to move into closed session.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? I'll recall this meeting to order at nine o'clock PM. We were in closed session for three items. The first one was financial for the cemetery mowing tenders.
I'm moving to accept the newest tender.
You heard the motion from Counselor Valentine. Do we have a second? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Nineteen-two was Business Center Request for Proposals, and we are going to invite the person who submitted a proposal to sit down and discuss options with council as a follow-up before we make a decision. And nineteen-three was a property issue, and we're going to wait for some more information, and we'll talk about that at the June meeting, which, incidentally, will be June second at seven thirty PM, right here.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
The motion. Thank you, everybody. Good night, and hockey game starts now.